Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please be upstanding, the Mayor of the City of Clarence, councillor of Clarence. the traditional and original custodians of the land on which we meet, and acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the land, skies and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting on Monday, the 28th of July 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on the council's website. Item number two, apologies, councillor Hunter has a leave of absence. Other than that, we have a full house. We're waiting on councillor Hume to join us very shortly. Item three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associate. Are there any declarations this evening? There being none, we move now on to, well, before we head into omnibus items, I'd just like to note that our CEO, Mr Nelson, is not with us this evening, and in his place you have Mr Daniel Marr as acting CEO. So, welcome to the hot seat tonight, Mr Marr. I also note that we have Miss Tomlin here representing Mr Marr, and Miss Moore representing Mr Graham. Other than that, our three other, five other officers are here, as well as Miss Ellis. So, thank you all very much. Now moving into omnibus items, item number four, 4.1, confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the 7th of July 2025 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we now move into mayor's communications. And colleagues, this evening I wish to acknowledge the recent passing of two very special Tasmanians, who both played important roles in serving others, both in our city and across our state. The Honourable Sir Guy Stephen Monague Green, AC, KBE, CVO, served as the Chief Justice of our Supreme Court for some 22 years, from 1973 through to 1995. In 1995, Sir Guy was appointed the 24th Governor of our state, and for eight years, served with distinction in this role. During this time, he also served as administrator of the Commonwealth. Such was Sir Guy's extensive community involvement following his time as governor, in the arts, particularly as chairman of the Board of 10 Days on the Island, and as chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Tasmanian Museum and Art Gallery, as well as his active interest and support for the Antarctic sector, I am sure we've all had some level of engagement with him over his many years of service. So, to Lady Green and the Green family, we offer our heartfelt appreciation and condolences. As colleagues may have noted from the tribute in Saturday's Mercury, Mr Linden James Pettawood, affectionately known as Pekka to his many friends, passed away a week ago today. Pekka was one of the first community leaders I met as your newly-elected mayor in 2022, in his role as president of the Military Brotherhood Military Motorcycle Club, TAS South. This organisation is a national ex-services organisation that provides support, assistance and guidance to current and former defence personnel and their families. Pekka approached me seeking to partner with council to establish a veteran assistance centre in our city. Pleasingly, we were able to secure facilities at the Risenvale Hall, and over the past three years, hundreds of veterans and their families have accessed services and received valued assistance. I will remember the moment Pekka excitedly called to tell me that the family of Teddy Sheen VC granted permission for the Brotherhood to rename the centre the Teddy Sheen Veteran Assistance Centre. I saw Pekka in late April, following Anzac Day at the Risenvale Centre, and although waging his private battle against the debilitating effects of MND, to the very end, he proudly served our veteran community. So, to Correll and the Pettawood family, please accept our gratitude and condolences on behalf of a grateful city. So, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, may I please invite you all to stand for a minute's silence to honor the memories of Sir Guy Green and Linden Pettawood. Thank you colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Moving now on to mayor's diary. My diary entries have been circulated from the 8th of July through to today, the 28th of July, and I'd like to thank the deputy mayor for representing me at two events over that time as well, as always. Thank you, deputy mayor. 4.2.3 is a notice. Following the recent election for the Local Government Association of Tasmania, I can report that the TEC wrote to me on the 14th of July to advise that Mayor McTuck has been returned as the president of the Local Government Association of Tasmania. And for the General Management Committee representatives for the Southern Electoral District, which we're in, for populations less than 20,000, Mayor Lee Gray has been elected, and for populations in excess of 20,000, Mayor Paul Lurie has been elected as a representative on the General Management Committee. So, I table that correspondence. Thank you, sir.
On a question of clarification, it appears that Clarence City Council did not vote in favour of its candidate that was, excuse me, myself, which was a decision of this meeting some month or two back.
Councillor James, you know the rules, you have a question, ask a question time. Thank you. All right, moving now on to 4.3, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling of petitions. Acting CEO, are there any petitions?
May there are no petitions.
Thank you, acting CEO. 4.5, reports from outside bodies. The Copping Refuge Disposal Site, Joint Authority, councillor Walker, anything to report? TAS Water South, councillor Warren? Okay. Moving on, TAS Water Corporation. As colleagues would be aware from media reports last Thursday, the Office of the Tasmanian Economic Regulator published TAS Water's proposed Price and Service Plan 5, PSP 5, submission that was submitted on the 30th of June. And to quote TAS Water CEO, Mr George Theo, Mr Theo says, "TAS Water is at a critical juncture. We must invest now to lift the performance of our assets to the standards expected by customers and regulators of a modern water utility, and avoid passing an even greater financial burden and further environmental degradation on to future generations. The submission aims to responsibly break the cycle of underinvestment in critical infrastructure." End quote. TAS Water are holding several information sessions over coming weeks, and I extend an invitation to all interested colleagues to participate in these. The regulator will deliver their draft determination in February of next year, and the final decision in April of 2026. Moving on to the Greater Hobart Committee, we're still waiting, as we'd all be aware, for the outcome of the election, and for government to be commissioned before the committee meets again. So, I'll keep colleagues updated on that front. We also have listed in our agenda papers the Community Willbeing Advisory Committee meeting minutes dated the 30th of June. I understand councillor Chong, you have some minutes you'd like to table as well? Richmond Advisory Committee? Thank you very much.
Yes, the main minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Are there any other reports for tabling this evening? Councillor Mulder?
I have a draft communique of the upcoming Australian Coastal Council's conference, which I think is of very important note, as to do it. And a brief history was that it was as far back as 2019 that COAG, the Council of Australian Governments, referred the issue of coastal erosion to a ministerial meeting of environment ministers. By 2019, that had come up with a report that suggested that there be a collaborative, national collaborative approach to managing coastal hazards in Australia over the next 15 years. Wind the clock forward a good six years, and nothing has happened. But the Australian Coastal Council's Committee have had a number of discussions and have progressed this thing to the point where, at their next council conference, one which in interest to saving the rate payers a dollar or two, I will not be travelling, happy to keep you informed, but there'll be a communique which calls upon the Australian State Territory Government to work with local governments to urgently develop a coordinated national response to coastal climate risks and other hazardous, by establishing a national funding programme to support local and regional coastal hazard management. Should this get up, should this, the government finally take note, I think it heralds a time when we will stop our bury-the-head-in-the-sand-and-retreat strategy, and start to take some proactive strategy to protect our coastlines. So, I table that, the draft communique and associated reports for the benefit, interest of members, and I assure you I will keep you informed.
Thank you councillor Mulder. I can also report to colleagues that the Australian Local Government Association National General Assembly, late June, I was invited to attend the Coastal Roundtable meeting that was sponsored by the Municipal Association of Victoria to talk about this coastal issue. And clearly, as councillor Mulder has touched on then, there's no national coastal policy to ensure principles of coastal management are consistently applied across the country. In fact, Tasmania stands alone alongside, well, we don't stand alone, we stand aside Northern Territory as the only jurisdiction where we don't have a coastal policy. What we do have is ambiguous, our data document, which takes sufficient detail to guide coastal management. We also don't have a dedicated coastal unit within the Department of Natural Resources, Environment, or any other agency to address crownland management issues or provide support to local governments. So, councillor Mulder, thank you for the work that you do in this area. It's very important, and I know that the officers and those in Miss Moore's team that I've been working with in the lead-up to that conference, I know the team are doing a lot of work, but there's still a great deal more to be done.
Adding those extra side pieces, but it bears noting that the premier of the state shortly before calling the election actually commissioned a draft policy, a coastal hazards policy.
Yeah, well, as we know, there's no government at the moment, though, but thank you councillor Mulder. Right, weekly briefing reports, the weekly briefing reports, the 7th, 14th and 21st of July 2025 have been circulated councils, councillors rather. Are there any matters arriving? Councillor James?
Thank you. On the 14th of July, there is a planning appeal decision regarding 2.2 Forward Parade in Lindisfarne, in that it refers amongst other things to the, that the appellant withdrew the appeal as the proponents' entitlements under the registered stratum scheme to undertake the development, and in any subsequent retirement amendment will instead be the subject of the Supreme Court proceedings, unquote. Does that mean that the matter, should it be decided either for or against, well, the proponents, that it has to be decided in the Supreme Court on the basis that the tribunal is not privy to that particular process?
Thank you councillor James. So, you or Miss Tomlin like to take that. Thank you, Miss Tomlin.
Thank you. Yes, the, under the planning, sorry, under the planning system, we're not able to look at strata division, so that's why it's taken for consideration in a separate forum, and not through the tribunal.
Thank you, Miss Tomlin. And the question, that answer's through me, councillor James. Thank you. Now, another question through me to...
Indeed, on this, still on the same matter. Why weren't the appellants advised of this until such time as it reached the mediation process, and then it appeared that they were then advised that it had to go through a different process in order to be determined?
Thank you councillor James. Acting CEO, please.
Through you, mayor. Thank you councillor James for the question. From what I understand, this is a matter that the appellants have raised at the mediation, and they are looking at what legal remedies are available to them. So, that we're conveying the information that was provided by the appellants in withdrawing from the tribunal. So, it wasn't up to us to advise anyone. The appellants have advised us that they're going to pursue another form of recourse.
Councillor James?
And further, does that mean that the appellants will have to seek their own legal counsel in order to see this through the appropriate process?
Acting CEO?
Through you, mayor. Yes councillor James, they were represented at the hearing, and they will pursue their own action in the way they see best fit, and I imagine that will be gaining representation.
Councillor James?
Another matter in relation to the outcome of the public land disposal process with 1,000 Cambridge Road, Cambridge. On page 26, it refers to the outcome of the public land disposal process relating to part of, relating to part of the Cambridge Memorial Oval at 1,000 Cambridge Road. Statutory, in the last paragraph, third paragraph, it says, "The statutory notification period for receipt of objections to that has now closed. Council did not receive any objection. My question is, to what extent was advertising done in relation to this, and did it include notification on the fence of the Cambridge Memorial Oval, and any other advertising in relation to this matter?"
Thank you. Miss Tomlin? Oh, Miss Moore, sorry.
I think it might be the head of governance that needs to respond to that one.
Thank you. Miss Shay?
Thank you. I'd love to act as advertising in the Mercury. I understand that there was also a right to protest.
Thank you, Miss Shay. Anything else? Nothing else? Colleagues, councillor Hume, and welcome.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about the lateness, a bit of traffic. The 7th of July weekly briefing report had a report on the city culture partnership programme, and of course, the council city culture programme has been extraordinarily successful and a great asset to our city. I'm just curious to know if, from the research that's been done on visitation to our cultural programmes, whether there's any indications of how many interstate and international visitors participate in Clarence arts and cultural events, and whether those events in any way influence the decision to travel to Tasmania?
Thank you councillor. Miss Coburn?
Through you, mayor. Thank you for your question. Yes, we do endeavour through our ticketing platform to gather demographic data of where our visitation to our events, where those people are coming from. I don't obviously have that data to hand, but I could certainly ask our head of programme to put together some facts for you in a briefing. But we do endeavour to capture that data to inform how we market our programmes.
Thank you, Miss Coburn. Councillor Hume?
If we could get a briefing on that, I think it'd be very interesting.
Weekly briefing report, thank you, Miss Coburn. Thank you councillor Hume. Colleagues, anyone else wish to ask a question regarding the weekly briefing reports? All right, I note that we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I have a mover, please? Thank you, deputy mayor, seconda. Thank you councillor Chong. All those in favour? If you're unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item number five, which is public question time. There are no questions on notice. So, we move down to 5.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? Thank you. Name
Victor Marsh on the bluff. Due to the unacceptable delays in the Department of State Gross release of the reports to the community and council in relation to the totally failed High Performance Training Centre proposal in Charlesham Memorial Park and Rosney Park lands, is the council now going to pursue this matter by having their own reports done, in particular, an ecological assessment of the critically endangered swift parrot habitat with its 177 tagged Tasmanian blue gums in these parks, and is it probable and its probable impact on the city heart plan?
Thank you, Mr Marsh. Miss Moore, is that one for you? Oh, we'll take this on notice and come back. We'll have the answer in the, rather than freewheeling here, Mr Marsh will have a detailed response in the minutes of this meeting. If you wouldn't mind, sir, probably providing a writing to Miss Ellis, just so we've got the question, that would be, that would be good as well. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public gallery this evening? All right, there being none. We move on to deputations. Acting CEO, are there any deputations this evening?
Mayor, we have one deputation tonight, and that is from Mrs Joanne Marsh.
Good evening, Mrs Marsh. Your suburb, please, and just a reminder that you are limited, as you know, to three minutes, and in the interest of fairness, I will, the timer will sound and we'll end there. So, the floor is yours for the next three minutes. Thank you.
Joanne Marsh Bellre. I applaud the dedicated work of Birdlife Tasmania. The recent launch of the Clarence Birdwalks brochure prompted us to visit some tracks we are not familiar with. We experience nature's gifts of beautiful birdsong and stunning landscapes. As you are aware, I have addressed the council on a number of occasions about the continued problem of tripping hazards, unstable surfaces, and steep gradients on walking surfaces in Clarence. These hazards make people with mobility issues vulnerable to injury, and restrict safe access, possibly excluding them. We were very disappointed that none of the 10 walks had a logo indicating DDA compliant walking surfaces provided by council. Two-wheel drive car parks do not define access. I believe that the 10 walks presented in the brochure need to be assessed for their suitability, to have parts of them modified to safely include people with mobility issues. The steep slippery gravel path at the beginning of the Shag Bay Heritage Trail needs urgent attention. We were also concerned that the brochure was restricted to forests and coasts. There are a number of places in my local area which are obvious, highly accessible bird walks with reasonably safe, stable walking surfaces. Victoria Esmondard, Charlesham Memorial Park, Rosney Parklands, Sheehoke Point. During the months Victor and I stood in Charlesham Memorial Park to support the Save Rosneys Parks group, we were able to list and enjoy the company of at least 20 bird species. Parks and gardens in Clarence, particularly Rosneys Parklands, must be recognised and promoted by council as important wildlife habitats and passive recreation areas, important support for our growing, connected and resilient community. All over Australia, these centralised open spaces are being targeted by large development proposals. The 150-year-old Barambin Victoria Park in Brisbane has been earmarked for Olympic stadiums in 2032, currently the subject of community protest action. Our parks with particular tree species need to be understood and publicly recognised as areas of ecological significance by council. Council have erected signs at Alexandra Esperant and Southarm Highway highlighting, Southarm highlighting vandalism of significant trees. There are signs at Mount Rumney and Mount Canopus indicating a swift parrot habitat. One is currently lying beside Graham's Road. It seems entirely appropriate for similar signs to be erected in Rosneys Parklands, ensuring community awareness of the significance of the tagged Tasmanian blue gums, and how habitat improvements can be made to protect and nurture the amazing species of birds visiting the parks or making the parks their home in Clarence. It was a joy to see flocks of musk lorikeets. One is featured on the front cover of the Birdwalks brochure, visiting the park during the late blooming of the blue gums this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Marsh, and thank you for your feedback. It was absolute pleasure to officially launch this brochure, which is an exciting collaboration between the city of Clarence and Birdlife Tasmania on the 30th of June at our Waverley Flora Park. And as you correctly point out, Clarence is home to a stunning diversity of landscapes, coastal wetlands, woodlands, beaches and bushland, and also a remarkable bird life. So, thank you for your ongoing interest in this area and your deputation this evening. All right, colleagues, is that the last deputation? We now, I now advise that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving on to 7.1, there's a recommendation before us. I'll call for a mover for the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Hume. Is there a seconda? Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, mayor. This is a development which triggers quite a large number of performance criteria in various use standards, but all of them, I believe, comprehensively addressed by the, by the associated report. I understand that sometimes there is a frustration, and you know, I've received correspondence in relation to this, this application, and I can see from that correspondence that there's a bit of a frustration sometimes from representatives that they feel like they're not being heard, and that, you know, their concerns are being dismissed, when the reality is that sometimes it just comes down to a lack of understanding of the planning scheme and how it operates. And the, you know, the concerns that they're raising are either not addressed by the planning scheme, or they're addressed by the planning scheme, but, but in a way that they don't really understand how the planning scheme applies, in terms of both the wording in the scheme, but also we understand that the planning scheme is given further definition through various tribunal rulings. Should colleagues wish to... Should colleagues wish to, I guess, debate that further and disagree with any of the findings of the, the officers, then I will address those remarks in my write-up reply. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Hume. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with the comments just that have been put forward by Councilor Hume. This is one of those situations where we, I, I have sympathy for a number of the issues that have been put forward by the representations that have been made. I would point out too that one of the next door neighbours in their representation does say that they are very supportive of the development. There are those minor issues around things like overshadowing and privacy and some of the things that unfortunately aren't able to be determining factors in our considerations as a planning authority at particular times. So although I note that in some of the acceptable solutions, there are things such as the visibility around the window where it can't be seen in or out, which is very helpful in that particular instance. So it, it is one of those occasions where we always have sympathy, but often little that we can do about it. And I do agree that this is an application that, in my view, an alternate wouldn't be able to be sustained on appeal. Hence why one hasn't been put forward, I note, this evening. But I do thank the council offices for all the hard work they've done in addressing what were quite a number of issues around the edges and the margins. Thank you for putting that together. And thank you to the representatives in the way that they've actually gone about engaging positively in relation to the project generally and understanding the framework in which we need to navigate. So I seek colleague support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to speak on this matter? Council James and then Council Mulder.
Thank you, and it is interesting to note that we've received a representation from one of the residents. And I must say that the degree to which he's gone into the discussion in relation to this is commendable. Because not only has he spoken out on behalf of a number of the other residents, some of whom have already indicated their, their objection to this particular development application, but he's also addressed each of those items of the planning scheme and covered those points. It's interesting to note that along Bayview Road, there are multiple precedents where existing garages and carports are located within the frontage setback. And there's also been referred to in this, in the officer's report about some of those that in fact are located at different intervals along Bayview Road, where they are just, in, in some parts, 0.3 of a metre from the frontage. And further along Bayview Road at 62 Bayview, their setback is of just 0.3 metres. Now, there's no indication of when these particular buildings were constructed. They may have been, and it's subject to advice, I would suggest, that, that may have been with a prior planning scheme. And we've had a number of those over the years. In this place, I've been here a while, and there's been about four since I first came into this place, as far as the planning scheme is concerned. Also, there is reference to the building works within a waterway and a coastal protection area, which must avoid or minimise adverse impacts on natural assets, having regard to erosion, torial vegetation, et cetera. And the proposed buildings and works are partially, are partially located within the coastal protection area, located at the rear of a site which adjoins Lordedale Beach. So it's been acknowledged that this particular development is located within the coastal protection area. And that, I would have thought, would have been one of the key factors in determining as to whether or not this order be approved or, in this particular case, in my opinion, be refused. I will not support the project, this particular development.
Council Mulder?
Thank you, and on a very similar point, it's the Natural Assets Code which says that the acceptable solution is not met because the proposed development is partially within a coastal protection area and not confined to a defined building area on the title. The same applies to every single house along that street. And it actually underlines the importance, not only for this premises, but for every single house that lives within that zone, of the importance of the thing, the coastal council's proposal to fund a national approach to defending the coastline, rather than our current approach of retreating from it. Because that not only applies to this construction, it applies to every single dwelling here. We've been through the exercise recently with Cremonne, and we go through it with Seven Mile Beach from time to time. And that's why we need this national programme and a state policy to back it up. But more importantly, the funding from a national and state level to complement our programme as we seek to defend our coast from the inevitability of coastal erosion caused by sea level rise, not to mention adverse weather effects. So that's not, that's not a basis for refusing this application. But it is a base, but it underlines the importance of future-proofing some of these things for not putting our head in the sand metaphorically, to avoid and not bite the bullet because it's coming. If we don't bite the bullet, something like 60% of Australia's population will be adversely impacted by a sea level rise, because we all hang to the coast and we all love our beaches. As for the other matters that are raised, this house is not unique. It's a classic, as, as the shacks are upgraded to fully blown, shall we say, McMansions almost. On these small blocks with these issues and, and the coastal erosion, this is what happens. And that's what, and, and there wouldn't be a house in the street that fails the acceptable solutions that are identified in here. But like this one, they all meet the performance criteria as, as logically assessed, as needs to be assessed in the environment in which they are. And that includes drainage issues, it includes the coastal erosion and, and those, those sorts of issues. And if you were to take it on, this, I think, in my view, would fail miserably at appeal. However, the, at least one of the representatives has done a great deal of work in trying to demonstrate that it possibly could succeed in appeal. And I would encourage them to test the waters in that regard, just in case I and the planners have got it all wrong. And, and, and who knows? As we found out with the golf course, similar inundation issues. Suddenly, all the expert advice was overturned because the community had a different model, which turned out to be more robust than the one council was relying on. And that is an opportunity that exists. So it's not without cause, but on the balance of probabilities, I don't think this one would fly in an appeal, but it would be really interesting to see it tested, but not at ratepayers' expense.
Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this item? Being on, Council Hume, write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilor James's efforts to, you know, find, find a reason to refuse this. But I've gone through this, this application line by line, looked at every use standard, and it behoves all of us to do the same. I'm sure, you know, all colleagues apply the same level of scrutiny. We put a lot of work into scrutinising these applications and in some cases even visiting sites and seeing them for ourselves. I wasn't able to on this occasion. But Councilor James raised a couple of reasons for his decision not to support this application. He mentioned the compatibility with the streetscape, that there are similar setbacks. But those setbacks, you know, we don't know whether they were, those developments were approved under this planning scheme or previous planning schemes or a different set of use standards? No, that's true, we don't know that. But let's recognise that the performance criterion doesn't specify the reason for the compatibility or for the other setbacks of other developments in the area being as they are. The question is simply one of whether it is compatible, whether there are similar setbacks within, within the streetscape. The question of how those setbacks came, came about is not a relevant consideration. And of course, Councilor James also noted that it's located in a coastal protection area. Well, yes, let's not forget that under the planning scheme, every use standard consists of an acceptable solution and performance criteria. Should it not meet the acceptable solution, and Councilor James has pointed out astutely that in this case it does not, you then apply the, the performance criteria. So the performance criteria are the detailed issues that look at whether that has any impact on the area. So you're looking at questions of, for example, impacts caused by erosion, siltation, sedimentation, impacts of riparian littoral vegetation, et cetera, et cetera. And the, you know, through the assessment process, those issues have all been canvassed, looked at carefully, and it's found to, to comply with the performance criteria, to, to not have that impact. So, you know, I think it's fairly clear, as Councilor Mulder said, that this development, you know, complies, complies with the planning scheme. And it would be very difficult for a challenge to that to get up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hume. Well, I'll now put the matter, that is, for a planning application for 90 Bayview Road, Lordedale, for additions and alterations for single dwelling be approved, subject to conditions and advice. Put that motion. All those in favour? Against? So carried. Council now concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Before I move on to item number eight, there's something I neglected to mention in my mayor's communication. That is, it's the deputy mayor's birthday today, so happy birthday and best wishes to our deputy mayor. Moving now on to... There might be cake later, I'm told, but item, moving, moving now on to item number eight, going down to 8.4.1 under governance. And that is that under the heading Collaborative Network of Southern Tasmanian Councils, there's a recommendation before us. I'll call for a mover. Thank you, Council Mulder. A second up for that, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Council Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I rise to, to recommend this, to move this motion, that we, that this collaborative network be developed. And it's, it's important to point out that it's a collaboration on service provider. It's at the operational level. It's something that council itself wouldn't actually have to approve because the projects and the operations in which it's done are already in our budgets and, and our programmes, as they are in the other councils. This is about sharing resources. And when you've got this lopsided, turvy-turvy system we have in Tasmania, 29 councils and three tiers and, you know, and some that are basically such a level, they're unsustainable without government grants and without handouts from everyone else around them, which in effect is what it is. The reason we even need this is because we folded at the barrier of council amalgamation. Had we amalgamated councils, they would have been self-sustaining councils that are capable of managing their own resources without grants from the government all the time, without having to, you know. Now, sharing resources like planning staff and fixing up peaks and troughs about street sweepers and all those sorts of things are really good. Unfortunately, because we wouldn't bite the amalgamation bullet, we're now in a situation where small, unviable councils have got to be relying on basic what amounts to handouts from their neighbours. And as good neighbours, of course, we would engage in this sort of activity. And of course, we would make it sure. But I just raise the point that while we have this shambolic 29 councils and everyone standing on their own dung heap, pretending that they are autonomous and represent the people, when in fact they are living off, off the bonuses of the taxpayer and, and neighbouring larger councils like us. So we do the right thing. Charity begins at home and next door, apparently. So that's what we're doing, and that's why I commend this as a necessary and appropriate mechanism.
Thank you, Council Mulder. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be brief and don't have too much additionally to add to Council Mulder's contribution. Other than to say, obviously, this is an alternative pathway for regional collaboration along the lines of the areas that Council Mulder detailed, whether it's areas such as legislative reform, you know, the regional land use strategy, sharing of resources, all of those sorts of things. It is important that we speak with one another on a regular basis. I'm sure that as much for our CEO and our operational staff as it is for the elected members to also be communicating across boundaries, vitally important, given the structure in which we work and the economies of scale that we're often trying to achieve and supports to offer one another. And it is an annual decision that we're making at the moment. So we'll have an opportunity in 12 months' time to see how this is going. For our council, it's a cost of $9,500. For other councils, smaller councils, I think around $3. I think hopefully this will be money well spent and that we'll be able to see the benefits of these collaborations in 12 months' time, when of course we'll have the opportunity to see that the proof of the pudding's been in the eating. So we, I think we do need to support it, give it, give it the opportunity to succeed where the previous systems obviously declined. And this new proposal's been put forward. So I think, hopefully, this opportunity will be embraced by all of our councils in the south and will reap benefits for everyone that participates, and I'm pleased to support.
Thank you, Deputy. Before I call for another speaker, I'll just say that those in the public gallery are more than welcome to stay till the end of the meeting. But I've got a feeling you're not here for the Collaborative Network of Southern Tasmanian Councils. So if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome. We wouldn't be offended. But thank you for joining us tonight, but I think you may have been here for the earlier item. It's entirely up to you, gentlemen, but, but thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this, to this item? Councilor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If you're watching this in the future, you're probably a council officer or fellow councillor, and I've probably suggested rolling the tape back if this organisation is coming to us asking for full-time staff or it's being put to us in a budget line item that, no, we always pay dues for this entity. The bottom line is, this is not an unfettered approval that we're providing, and it is not an eternal approval that we are providing. This is us releasing an allocated amount of funding from last, this year's budget to say, see how you go. Arguably, this could just be another layer of bureaucracy. And we are in somewhat extending a leap of faith because the guardrails haven't actually been defined about how this entity is going to operate. And I am somewhat circumspect about this, given the previous history with STCA. They probably shouldn't have even mentioned it if they wanted a prosperous future. I blame STCA for the United Nations of mediocrity when it came to the last urban growth boundary that was developed and about how that organisation went about that. I think ratepayers should be a bit annoyed if they've got thousands of dollars of work around their neighbourhood in the form of potholes that haven't been got to, given STCA spent, no doubt, thousands when they came up with the genius idea to change their name to Think South and then figure out only a bit along the road that no one even knew what they were talking about, so they reverberated back. I was delighted to lead the charge last year in Clarence leaving, last term of council and Clarence leaving the STCA. And I, and it was a collaborative move. and Clarence leaving the STCA, and it was a collaborative move that was supported through the mayor of Glenorkie and the mayor of Kingborough, and it eventually led to that organisation's demise. I think this new structure could be more nimble, and is largely meant to be the voice of CEOs, so call it the CEO forum. We'll see how it goes, and I, you know, I wish well for it, but as I said, this is not, this is not an internal bureaucracy, this is 12 months of see how you go, so see how you go.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor James?
I wasn't going to enter into the debate, but I will.
Oh, thank you councillor James.
Indeed, and may I say from the outset that on page 61, I would seek clarification on this opening sentence, and that is, the governance structure for the new model would include the chief executive officer slash general manager, or delegate from each Southern Tasmanian council, with the role of chairperson rotating amongst the councils supported by the RDA Tasmania. Elected members would be engaged in the business of collaborative network via their respective CEOs or general managers, and ultimately would be responsible for making decisions regarding their respective council involvement. That seems to me, and this is where I see clarification, as to whether or not the administrative arm of a council is in fact going to sort of chair these meetings, and therefore elected members would be engaged via their respective CEOs and general managers in order to participate or make decisions in relation to council's involvement on expenditure or regional collaborative incentives. So am I reading that correctly, or is it basically that the elected members would have more of a say in what goes on within these, in this particular role of this new model, rather than what appears to me to be more of a general manager and a chief executive officer role as chairperson of these organisations?
Councillor James, thank you for your question. The short answer is yes, you did read it correctly, word perfect in fact, but I suppose an answer to your question, it's a similar format to, we currently employ a number of forums. One is the Greater Herbert Mayor's Forum, where the chair rotates amongst the four Greater Herbert mayors, and we take that in turn. Sird is another example, the South East Regional Development Association that I'm deputy president of, but in that situation, we have a number of officers, the CEO, Miss Wicks, Mrs Hannan, et cetera, represent our council at that forum. If there are expenditure or projects, obviously that require resources, be that financial or otherwise, that is in a question that the CEO would then bring back to us as elected members to authorise that work. So does that, does that answer or relay your concerns there councillor James?
Look, anything which can create involvement and a greater connection, and I take councillor Mulder's point there about any move in the short, perhaps, short term for councils' mergers and amalgamations into something which is more viable, I would fully support, and therefore, and also too, I understand reading this, that there is a two-year sort of timeframe for this to be involved in or to see how it goes, and then a subsequent review. So, look, any idea, any means by which we can sort of move, as I believe, towards council mergers, and this may be a topic that can be discussed, I support, and I will support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute to the debate? If any, councillor Mulder, write a reply please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, for all contributions, including yours. I think on page, let's get, we've got to get this right, page 61, the objectives of this have got nothing to do with advocating for law reform, as the deputy mayor suggested, and nor is it actually about council amalgamations. I was suggesting that this was an appropriate backstop because we lacked the will or the capacity to actually move down that path. What this demonstrates, and if you look at the objectives on page 61, and they're all there, it's about virtually creating a coordinating mechanism against the councils. And we all sit here and talk about Clarence's road priorities, as if the people of Sorrel didn't drive on our roads. You know, so that's the reason. This may very well demonstrate that there isn't a need for all these little councils and their own little priorities and their own, you know, pushing their own barrows, sometimes to the detriment of neighbouring councils and those sorts of things. This may actually demonstrate that this committee would assist with the strategic stuff and the service delivery where the councils lack the resources. So I take the fervent desire, included by many, that there would be a mechanism that could demonstrate that we don't need 29 councils, but that's not really what this is about. And I'm more than happy to say that I will be the first person to stand up and move that we execute it the moment it starts to have little councils who want it to remain independent, who want it to be on their own, start to tell us what to do. At that particular point in time, I will be busy saying them, you just stick to your old model, you just go cap in hand to the government every time you need to, and at the given rate, you're likely to be more success because these things tend to happen in pre-election environments, and heaven knows we're going to have a fair few of them.
Colleagues, I put the motion as recommendation, and that is, the council endorsed participation in the collaborative network of Southern Tasmanian Councils, which will be supported through Regional Development Australia Tasmania and replace the Southern Tasmanian Council's Authority, requests the Southern Tasmanian Council's Authority Board to commence a winding-up process in accordance with the rules of the Joint Authority and the requirements of the Local Government Act of 1993. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to, there are no motions on notice. Item number 10, councillors' question time, there are no questions on notice, questions to, or answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. 10.4 questions without notice, are there any questions for the full receiving, starting with councillor Kennedy? Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong? Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Darko? Councillor Goine?
I wasn't expecting to be that quick. Can I ask a question for everybody else's non-two questions?
No, you only get two, I'm sorry, as much as I'd like to, but...
That's okay, I was joking.
We're not cutting out the time tonight.
So the Lauderdale Canal Master Plan is on hold for a multitude of reasons, including the results of the water quality testing. If and when will this report be available to access to the public?
Thank you. Miss Moore?
I might have to take that on notice, I believe that we do have it available, but not quite at a point where we can put it out to the public, so I can confirm.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Goine?
The Lauderdale Self-Matched Reserve Activity Plan 2020-2030 has earmarked goals in accordance of priority, with most timeline to be completed by 2025-2026. Can I seek an update on the progression of this plan as we are fast approaching 2030?
Miss Moore?
My apologies, I will have to take that on notice, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goine. Councillor Walker?
Yes, thank you. It's great that we're now putting committee reports into council agendas, just going back to an earlier sustainability committee one, in relation to pursuing ESG guidelines in waste contracts. Can I be furnished with examples of where introductions of this has led to more competitive tendering, and any examples where it's reduced red tape?
Thank you, Miss Moore, we can come back to councillor Walker with that information? Unless you have it to hand now?
No, I was going to say take it on notice, but it might also be something I work with head of governance on.
Thank you, Miss Shay. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Moore. Councillor Walker, anything else? Thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you. I refer to the 2025 local government Tasmania election for the Southern Electoral District, more than 20,000. I note that, and I am aware, and I know my colleagues are aware, that council voted to, and recommended myself to be on that general management committee member, or to be, participate in the election, and I note from the returning officer that our representatives at that meeting did not vote in favour of the council decision for me to be on that management committee. And it seems that from looking at these results, that the recommendation that this council passed was not sort of followed through by those personal persons who were...
Have you had a question councillor James?
Yes, why wasn't that basically the election or the recommendation this council supported by their delegate for me to be on that management committee?
Thank you councillor James. Well, the first point I'll make is that every vote, of course, is secret, so that would indicate to me that you received no votes in that ballot, is that correct? Because I haven't seen that piece of paper you're referring to. Okay, all right. And the two incumbents were returned, Mayor Reet and Mayor Gray, to their respective positions. So the answer to your question is, I sought advice as the delegate at this council and exercised a longstanding convention, and voted as, someone that deals with these individuals on a daily basis, and is this council representative at Elgat, voted in the best interests of this council and of the association. It's a longstanding convention. It is, if you like, if I can use the example, a recent example of conclave, if you like, you know? Someone appoints the cardinals, but the cardinals go in there, they make their own decision in the best interests that they determine. So that's your answer. Any second question?
I refer to council's decision in relation to the billboard at Montague Bay, which was passed by this meeting, the last meeting. Given that this is the second application for a billboard that has approved by the elected representatives, does it set a precedent that in the future, other billboards along the highways or on council roads would seek approval from the elected members or from those persons who believe that billboards are a best way of having advertising or promoting any particular project or project? So is this a dangerous precedent, and will it occur now that we have approved two of these within the city of Clarence?
Before I call on acting CEO Miss Tomlin to answer, clearly, you know, as you know, that's under appeal at the moment, so it's not a done deal as it were. It came to this chamber, as did the other one that you referred to, because there were people opposed to it. So again, the decision rests with this body here, and then there's an opportunity then to take to appeal as the Department of Safe Growth has determined to do. So as to precedent setting though, acting CEO, do you wish to comment on that, please?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you councillor James for the question. The planning scheme doesn't rely upon precedent in terms of previous approvals. Some of the performance standards will look at the proliferation in regard to signage, the proliferation in the area. No doubt if someone else makes an application and there are existing billboards, they will point out that there are existing ones or not. And how much weight council gives to that will be determined by council at that time, as a council can only consider an application on the merits when it is lodged.
Thank you. Mr Ma, councillor Hume?
Two questions. The first one relates to the building that council has purchased at 30 Gordon's Hill Road, and I note that the current tenants have a lease until January 2027. What will be the process for determining what the use is for that building once the current lease expires or leases?
Could we take that on notice, please? That'd be subject to workshop briefing, unless, Mr Ma, you want to add something at this stage, but I think just, it might be better in a workshop setting in the first instance, councillor Hume, to work through those issues, but clearly we've got plans, but it's something that councils have yet to sign off on, and there's a number of potential tenants as well that we are in the initial stages of engaging with. But I'd like to put anything in the public forum at this time, though. Second question?
I've actually forgotten my second question, so I'll leave it for another meeting.
All right, thank you. Councillor Mulder, you have a question?
Congratulations, I sometimes forget why I'm here. I refer to the massive rise in Taz water charges to upgrade existing aging sewage infrastructure that appeared in the press. I also refer to the Clarence's world-leading Coal River Reuse Water Scheme, which is incomplete because Stage 3, which was to provide a detention basin which would actually drought-proof, would actually allow Class A water to flow into the Coal River Valley, to be reticulated into the Coal River Valley and beyond, I might say. Mr Mayor, as our representative on Taz Water Board, why is this, why is this significant project that probably at a lot lower cost than a lot of the upgrades they're talking about, not included in the Taz Water Strategic Plan?
The short answer is that there's a number of competing priorities around the studies you're aware, councillor Mulder. We own 11%, we're 11% shareholder, I certainly try to influence where I can, but 11% doesn't give you a controlling direction. But as to timing, I might take that on notice and come back to you, as to, because it is something I have discussed with Mr Theo and with some of his executive team and others. But, you know, the work at Breen Eston was significant, obviously the Self Point development is significant expenditure, and that's just down south here, moving towards the potability of water for the South East Irrigation Scheme, of course, is another issue as well, but for a more detailed answer, I'll have to come back to you, so I'm reluctant again to free-wheel on that one.
I do accept that, Mr Mayor, it's just that, by way of, just on that particular question, by way of further, I mean, things like Self Point, which you mentioned, actually I suspect that if it wasn't a full treatment plant, if it took it like most sewage plants do to Stage B, and then connected it to the South East Recycling Scheme, I would have thought that may have been a significant reduction in the cost of the Self Point facility, so that like our sewage facilities, a lot of those places just become Stage 1 and then pump it, instead of having to take it to Stage 3. Because the big benefit is, if we did Self Point, if we took the water from Glenorkie, you know, the Cadbury site, which was another recent stuff-up, if you took all that stuff and instead of dropping it into the Derwent, put it up to the top of the Coal River Valley and treated it, these would be significant cost reductions in these particular strategic programmes. So I raise that question. My second question, Mr Mayor, relates also to the billboard, and I note we all got this afternoon a letter, the basis of which was expressing first of all concern that they hadn't seen the notice on the fence. And I know we have this issue quite a lot about how do you advertise, and I know council does a good job with, you know, with notices on all the fences, which is actually where I saw it, walking along the highway one day, we advertise in the press, and also if you click through about 27 links...
Is there a question councillor Mulder?
Yes, Mr Mayor, you need to set the context.
No, 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 you don't preamble, just ask the question, please.
So we have all these things, including our website, is there a capacity perhaps to, on a weekly basis, on councils' Facebook, social media sites, to actually announcing that this link is available so that people who regularly view our website can actually, ah, well, let's see what's going on, click, and that would enhance the consultation? Is that a...
Thank you councillor Mulder. Miss Wicks?
I will take that one around, it's interesting to have conversation with the planning team to explore our options.
Thank you. And before I ask the deputy mayor if she has any questions, just coming back to councillor Hume's question, because I know you didn't have... Hume's question, because I know you didn't have a second by the cherry, but we'll just in answer to your first question, there will be a needs and demand analysis for the building and the business case for the community, develop that as a civic hub, which we will work through that at a workshop very soon. So that is progressing, I've been reliably informed by text just a moment ago. So thank you. Your second question?
Yes. The, in Mrs. March's deputation earlier, she talked about disability access to Clarence Tracks and Trails and as the Chair of the Access and Inclusion Working Group, I do actually know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it to put it on the record, I guess, what work is being done on improving and also outlining on signage and information, the accessibility of Tracks and Trails in Clarence?
Thank you, councillor Hume, and I note that this is an issue that deputy mayor raised with me just last week as well. So, Ms. Moore, is that something you're able to find an answer to, please?
I suspect councillor Hume might know a little bit more about that than I do, I might have to take it on notice, I do know that the Tracks...
That's a real Dorothy Digsor, isn't it?
The Tracks and Trails team are working on a number of aspects of DDA access and improvement and signage, but I don't have specific details about exactly what that looks like, so I'm happy to provide some more nuanced detail.
Maybe in a weekly briefing report. Councillor James, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I would.
As Chair of the Tracks and Trails?
I'm surprised that councillor Hume isn't aware, because he's a...
No, he is aware, he just wants him in the public group, he's providing him the opportunity.
We are proceeding with that very matter and there will be at our next meeting a discussion in relation to that. So through their community advisory committee, the deputy mayor chairs, we will forward those minutes and therefore they will be in turn announced and released at this meeting in the future meeting procedure. Thanks.
Anything else you'd like to add, councillor James?
Not at all.
No? All right. Deputy Mayor, any questions this evening from you? Yeah, thank you.
My question relates to the frequency of the review of council's approach to the management of noxious weeds such as serrated tussic. How often do we review our approach to the management and also do we engage with the State Government Department of Natural Resources and Environment in relation to that management and do we perhaps even get some assistance from them? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Moore?
You again for the question, I am going to have to take that one on notice as well, thank you.
Anything else, Deputy Mayor? All right, thank you. Well, thank you, colleagues. I now call for a motion to move into closed meeting, move councillor Chong second and councillor Goine. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you. Well, thank you to those members of the public who attended this evening in person, to those who are joining us via the live stream from home, look forward to seeing you again in three weeks' time, please end the live stream.